Good morning to all of you. Thank you for being here. The room is full of enthusiasm. I can look at the audience and tell. We are at order, in order, and ready to proceed to number two. Mr. Hewitt, you want to say anything before Mr. Wright submits anything? Is that what we're doing?
I didn't know that Mr. Wright was...
I don't think he's coming.
He's not going to be here. You guys just going to decide whether to tell me what to do? Is that where we are?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's all I know is what's on this page, so... All right. Who wants to talk?
Mike, you want to do it? On the first one?
If you put it...
Sure. Sure. What we're here today to talk about, or to vote on, excuse me, is whether or not to ask for an extension of time for the comment period beyond the 30 days that's statutorily permitted after the FIES is issued. And my thinking is that the more time we have for comment, the better. It allows the public to learn as much as possible, get all their input. It gives us a chance to give some due consideration to the report and any other documentation and information that we can receive. And so I would make a motion that we vote to extend, ask the environmental attorney, Clark Wright, to petition the Army Corps of Engineers to extend the comment period from 30 days to 60 days.
I second the motion.
You second the motion. All right, we have a motion. Second, discussion on the motion.
I also think it's very important because this is a very detail-oriented FEIS, and I think we need multiple scheduled meetings in order to inform everyone, answer questions, get public comment. And so a 30-day extension actually gives us three previously scheduled town meetings in order to thoroughly vet and get comment. So I really do think it's important that we emphasize to the core that one of the reasons, some of the major reasons are for us to be able to have a series of already scheduled public meetings so that we really get everybody's input.
Any more discussion?
I have no comment.
No.
Okay. In China, right?
In China.
Okay. All right, you ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. We're here on number three. Who wants to speak to that?
I guess I'm nominated as the speaker for today. Okay. In order to benefit from the request we're making to the Army Corps of Engineers in the instance if it is actually granted, we would, excuse me, we have to kind of keep where we are now as a status quo. So we don't want to move forward, and we don't want to do anything to either harm the application or to push the application forward until we've had a chance to have all the input from the community and from the people who are interested in how it happened. So as a second issue for today, we would like to make a motion that, and we can change the wording, I just kind of threw this together, that no employee, agent, contractor, subcontractor, or person representing the town of Holden Beach shall take any action advancing or terminating the current application process related to the terminal groin.
That a motion?
That's a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The only discussion point I have is that, you know, Clark Wright's doing a lot of work right now, and I know that, I know what Mike just said, but I want to make sure that all that work that he's doing continues so that on April 6th, we have considerable more information than that. So I don't know whether we revise that or whether that's in that, what you just said.
Well...
I hate to assume anything.
Yeah. And I think he doesn't plan on filing any application or terminating the application.
I think just for clarification, you might exclude corporate, or I guess...
Or we could say representing the town of Holden Beach before any federal or state regulatory agency. And that way Clark is not doing that. Am I correct?
Well, he is...
He's not, well, he's not, okay.
Is he speaking, and he speaks to them to get answers and details, correct?
He's not involved in the application process, though.
Correct.
He's only, he's only a consultant to us.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So if we put it, only the agents representing the town in the application process, that should, that should take care of that, correct?
Well, can I add something in? If you're going to direct that toward the application process, wouldn't that kind of invalidate the action that you took in two above because you've directed him, sorry, you've directed Clark to submit a request for a 30-day extension on an application? Right?
Bingo.
But that's just for the app, that's just to extend that 30-day comment period. What I suggested is that we follow through and allow Clark to continue his work, to include what's indicated in that one paragraph on the email that he sent to all of us that's dated March 12th.
Can you not just exclude him? So we can say excluding...
Resolution?
Yeah, excluding the work being conducted by Clark Wright.
Noel, what do you think?
If that's what you want to do, then make certain this phrase in the motion, and, you know...
I'd like to ask for some clarification for administrative purposes because we're talking about all efforts towards gaining a federal permit. That effort seems a bit incongruous with the discussion set forth, that there would be other hearings or multiple meetings to gather additional information. I just want to be real specific regarding the administrative staff here and what you all envision that that entails in terms of support. And I'm not being obtuse here because, you know, when we set a meeting up and the clerk sends out an agenda, that's support for a meeting in, toward gaining that permit. And I offer this up for, you know, slapback if you want to. Specifically, the KAMA permit resolution directs in writing that the town manager make the application on that. And it's always been my understanding that there are three tiers of directives from a board through the executive agent, and the first being an ordinance, the second being a resolution, and the third being policy that comes from the board as part of discussion in that hierarchy. And it would seem that what we're doing here to basically call a timeout on that relating to the administrative staff is a hierarchy below the directive that was established in the resolution to apply for the permit. We can come back to that. The other thing is directly relating to our contract with Dial-Cordy to make the application. Of course, that application, the work that they do, you know, we're under contract, and Noel, you can speak to that if you'd like, but we're under contract with them to prepare it. Of course, it's not submitted until it's signed by an executive agent of the town, which I assume would be the manager would have to sign that, or some other delegate of the town. To that contract, I am of the belief that there's probably been a lot of work done on the draft KAMA application, and I haven't seen it yet, I don't know that, but I would assume that they've been getting ready to drop the KAMA application just as soon as the EIS comment period is taken care of in order to fulfill their contractual obligations. And my question is, if they send me a bill for that work that they've done, am I to pay that bill? That's one question.
Can we answer that first? Let us just address that. Because at the last meeting, the Board of Commissioners meeting, when we were given the budget and how much had been expended, there was $26,000, roughly $26,000 left in that budget. And I asked the question about whether there was any further expense that we were incurring right now at that time going forward during the application process, and I was told no. Right? So either that's not, that wasn't accurate then, or this concern that you just raised now, it was a concern then but wasn't related to us. And I guess I would say if I had a little more time and thought this out, we would add into this that it's only going to stop the people from making the actual application. And that way, all the background work that you need to do can be done, and whatever the final decision is made, we can move forward without any further delay.
Okay. I think I get that. The, many of the things, in continuing, many of the things that we do relating to beach management are interwoven efforts specifically relating to the annual beach monitor and survey. We do 50-some transects on an annual basis, as ever thousand feet. And whenever we started the EIS, we wanted to capture some of the changes over time or as needed to set a baseline on the east end down there. So there are seven transects in a survey that we need to start now for our annual effort on measuring the beach and maintaining FEMA eligibility, that does the board construe the inclusion of those transects in our annual survey to be support toward the groin effort, especially in light of the fact that those surveys can be used for a threefold purpose. One, of course, to retain FEMA eligibility possibly in the inlet area, the terminal groin, baseline support, and other issues related to sand management in the inlet. So those are, that's one question I have there. Do you want me to exclude those from the pending survey charge?
Help me understand that a little bit more. That's an annual item where you take those checks and you establish, you know, and did the corps use that information? Is it in the final EIS, or was it in the EIS, or as far as information submitted?
We...
Because then they have the information that they need.
But we do those annual surveys, we do this...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess where I'm going with it, what does that have to do? Because previously, before this whole subject, right, you did the annual surveys. That's part of the beach process.
But we didn't, but we didn't do those. We didn't do those.
Oh, you didn't?
Let me just...
No.
Will these six or seven transects, they're not going to be part of the final application process. They're not going to move the needle either towards...
That's kind of where I'm going.
Acceptance or termination, right? It's not going to be included in the final, it's just something we do administratively. But it's not, it's not going to be specifically tailored and used by Dial-Cordy to file papers in support of the final application. That work is already done.
It would be done on an annual basis.
No, I mean, the work for the final application is already done, so...
That's correct.
So the only thing that's going to go back to the corps is the comments, right?
That's correct.
So that's the only new thing that the corps will analyze when deciding whether to go forward with the project or not, correct?
Right. What I'm trying to do here is I want to make...
You want to clarify things?
...skippy that all efforts, that I'm not crossing a line...
Right.
That y'all don't want crossed.
And I think I'm trying to clarify it as well, so that if that has, if that's not going to be part of the moving forward, asking for the application, or approving it, or asking that we not go further...
Okay.
Then it really doesn't...
Excluding.
Only things that will move the process forward or stop the process.
Okay.
And if that's not one of them, then we don't have to worry about it.
Okay. How about any of those public meetings that may be requested or scheduled? Because I'm assuming that we would want to have as many technical experts, our contractors also involved in that.
Right.
So in that context, that would move it forward.
No, actually, I don't, see, my feeling, let me tell you what my feeling is, and we'll see if we go. All, we're going to have people come in here, and that's going to be informational, and we're going to get background. That's not going in front of the federal agency or the state agency asking to do something, right? All it is, is like us sitting here now. You're giving me the benefit of your knowledge, those people are going to come in and give me the benefit of their knowledge. When that's done, we're going to decide whether we're going to go forward or not. But up until that time, we don't want any work done. It's either going to harm the process or move the process forward.
To me, efforts that are going to be necessary to educate the public, get their comments, and put our positions together need to continue.
Okay, but this says all efforts toward gaining the permit, and you guys are qualifying different types of efforts, and that is, that is...
No.
No.
Difficult for us to discern at the staff level on exactly what constitutes what the stop or go actions on administrative work. That's what my hangup.
Okay.
That's where I hang up.
Let me just rephrase this and see if this will make it a little simpler, right?
How about if I ask my last two things first?
Okay.
Okay, because I got two other things. Because what I'm thinking specifically is that you guys are going to want the consultant engineer and Dial-Cordy to come in and talk at one of these public meetings that...
Absolutely.
It's supposed to be having. Then how do I handle media inquiries to that? That's a big piece of this, including any dialogue that the corps would have or KAMA may have. How should I handle that? Because I think that we're assuming that we're going to set for something, the press is covering, I mean, we had, we had the television on the front step yesterday morning, and, you know, I don't think that it's a too awful far of an assumption that they may get a phone call from the corps or the KAMA guys that want to know what's up with the application. So how, how should I handle that?
Well, I...
And what I'm getting here is that...
I'd be shocked.
We do not want to sign, you don't want me to sign the application, and that's fine. I get that, it's the bottom line, but there's several other intervening aspects of it that I just want to make sure that I don't get crossways with the board's wishes.
To answer that question, I guess I would be, I would be shocked if the corps called you up and asked you because you can't do anything until they actually issue it to you, right? So I think, I think I would say that the process is proceeding, and we'll have a vote on how to proceed by the, by the elected officials.
If I may, in terms of what could be communicated, you're going to make a motion to either approve it or not. That motion speaks for itself.
Okay.
The second thing is, I think part of the follow-up after you adopt the motion or don't adopt the motion would be to communicate that to Dial-Cordy and Clark Wright, that he has that information available so that he can inform them that the board has taken this action or not.
Those were my questions.
Okay. So let me just give you this and see if this will address most of those. So it's no employee, agent, contractor, subcontractor, or person representing the town of Holden Beach before, before any federal or state agency shall take any action advancing or terminating the current application process related to the terminal groin until authority is issued, until a vote is conducted by the Board of Commissioners.
I still come back to the contractor aspect of it, Dial-Cordy. You know, the work that they've done between when we had the last board meeting and now, I mean, that's valid work that we're under contract, so it's what we're talking about. You know, are we going to break that contract?
What the board is discussing is essentially until such time as the board takes further action, which should not be sooner than April 6th according to the agenda, that these individuals, employees, contractors, agents representing the town before any federal or state agency, that would include Dial-Cordy. If the board adopts this motion today, then the pause button would be from today forward. If Dial-Cordy has billed the town in pursuit to a valid contract prior to, then that would not be something that would be included in this motion. It would be, that would be venture acted.
And any bill that comes for yesterday's work would be paid?
Understood.
Any costs already incurred would be paid? This is prospective. Did you stop it as of today?
You know, basically, what we're doing is saying, let's have a timeout while all of this is digested, all of the options are put forward, public comment is sought because we are about open meetings and getting informed public comment. And then when everyone is on the same page and we have heard everyone, and there is an opinion that can be formed, there will be a vote taken. If we get a 30-day extension, we'll actually have, as I said, three scheduled commissioners' meetings, evening meetings, to go through this and do it properly. So this is a timeout.
My point is, I don't know if our contract with Dial-Cordy allows us to hit the pause button. I don't know.
We could, we could vote here today and tell them we don't want them to go forward.
Either does or doesn't.
Yeah, and it's two weeks, so is it a...
The contract is the contract. We're talking about 11 or 12 weeks.
Yeah. It's two.
But I mean, we could terminate the contract if we wanted to, right?
Right.
Right? So if we can terminate the contract, I don't see it as the person who's paying the bill. I've been an active attorney, and I've hired attorneys. You do what the customer asks you to do when it comes to doing the work.
I have a question. I've listened to all these comments, and I'm still fuzzy in trying to understand staff. So any time there's a meeting, a phone call received, any interaction or action by the staff, does that continue as before, or does it stop?
No, it continues. The staff isn't representing the town in front of...
But it's expenses. Am I totally off base here? I mean, if we're stopping and suspending a timeout, but the staff is still working the same, I'm having a problem with that. Because I thought that something in the beginning of the discussion was that the staff was not to do anything. Am I the only one in the room that's hearing that? I just, I'm not seeing how you can have it both ways.
To me, again, if someone calls and you answer, you are not seeking to do work, you are answering questions. You are not actively engaging in forwarding anything, you are answering questions. So if someone calls in and asks a question, you answer the question, but you have not initiated or continued an effort on your beha, on behalf of either forwarding or impeding the groin process, as I call it. So, you know, we're basically saying not to use time and money to do further processes towards obtaining or stopping, excluding the fact that we need to prepare ourselves for comments to the document if appropriate. To me, any efforts are going to be geared towards a comment document if necessary. And that is the one exception to what we're saying, which is, don't do paperwork, don't forward efforts, don't stop efforts. It's like status quo. The one thing we should be focused on is, do we have comments towards the FEIS? And then that, that's a very specific thing to me.
What I'm trying to get, if I was the town manager, I would, I'd want to tell my staff one of two things. Continue to work as normal or stop.
Continue to work as normal pertaining to the terminal groin? I mean, work is, work is a universal language here.
Yeah, because I haven't been involved in any discussions on this agenda with anybody on the board, so I really don't know what all the thinking or discussions have been, but I'm just trying to envision the possible confusion that the staff may read into this. Just a simple directive to the staff, either do it or don't do it, I think they can understand. I don't have a hangup of whatever you want to do. You guys, you know, whatever you want to do, that's it, but...
I would, I would say that after, I'm sorry to cut you off, but we're just going around in this circle. So I would say after David asked his question, and we've explained that it's the people that are appearing in front of the commission, the people that are representing us in front of the commission, not the people who represent us at the window at town hall and answer the phones.
So they answer the questions, they continue to do it.
Exactly. They do their everyday work, no change at all. It's just that we don't want the application process to either move forward, the process, to take a piece of paper, make a motion, push a document. We don't want that to happen. But for the people in the town, if these folks aren't here today and they call up and they want to, they want to ask a question, then the people who work in the town should answer that question.
Sir, you can't speak. You cannot speak.
I ask unanimous consent that all the attendees be allowed three minutes to speak. I've done the math, it could take no more than 12 or 15 minutes on the matter pending today.
Commissioners, commissioners have the floor. There's nothing on the agenda for anybody to speak.
It's not on the agenda. We can't add it.
I didn't, I didn't prepare the agenda, I don't know. Anyway, what do you want to do?
Do we, are we ready to vote on the matter?
If that's what you want to do.
Well, we have to make, we have to make, we've just...
Cleaned it.
Changed the motion around a few times here, so we have to...
So we've got a motion on the floor. If you want to withdraw that motion, and the approving, the seconding person approves the withdrawal, and then make another motion, we can do that.
Yeah, that sounds like the right way to go.
I move we withdraw the present motion.
Your second?
All right, so the motion comes off the floor. Is there another motion?
Okay. Okay. Propose that the motion be, no employee, agent, contractor, subcontractor, or person representing the town of Holden Beach before any federal or state agency shall take no action, file any motion which advances what terminates the current application process related to the terminal groin prior to a vote of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Holden Beach.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Now discussion on the new motion. Now a discussion on the new motion.
Do you have any further questions, David?
I'm good.
Ms. Pat, is that any?
No.
Joe?
The only comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right. We have to add in there excluding the work conducted by Clark.
By Clark.
Clark, Clark Wright, sorry.
Ms. Fletcher, do you agree to that amendment?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Then I'm okay.
You're okay, you're okay, you're okay, you ready to vote?
I'm okay, you're okay.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It's unanimous, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an adjournment. Is there a motion we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.